Okay. It is 6:30. We will call the February 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Just a quick reminder, please use your microphones, Brian. Because we're gonna be on... Our little microphone thing isn't working, so... No, not at all. All right, we'll do roll. Brooks? Chuck?
Present.
Brian?
Microphone present.
Huh?
Here.
Alyssa?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
We have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with, I will make one correction. We are gonna move item number 10 up right behind item number 6 to accommodate the discussion on non-conforming uses. Does that make sense? Does that work for you? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to move a couple items off the consent
Okay.
for discussion. Make sure I got the right ones here. So pages 4 and 5.
So item 1 in the consent calendar, yep.
And page... 8 and 9.
And item number 3 in the consent calendar. We will move those below... Actually, yeah, we'll move them below 7. Okay, with those corrections, I would entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. You guys got that? Very clear, I'm sure. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay. Item number 4, the items 2 and 4 on the consent calendar. Entertain a motion to approve.
So, I guess I have a question on the intent of this parcel.
Oh, whoa.
Oh.
So we'll approve the consent calendar, the ones we'll discuss will become later.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion to approve, pause.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 5, approval of minutes of the Janu-
Motion approve. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the January 19th meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 6 is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so now. Come on up, Chief.
Good evening. Robert Dykstra, current Fire Chief of the Brandon Volunteer Fire Department. Just want to provide some comments on what was number 7, the zoning ordinance, and changing the setbacks, specifically the side setbacks from 7 feet to 5 feet. Just want to reiterate our concern from a fire safety standpoint. Anytime we reduce those setbacks... It does happen in other communities. There may be some codes and other things that align with it, but from a fire safety standpoint, it is a big concern. When we respond to a fire, we have a list of priorities. Our number one priority is life safety. Our second priority, believe it or not, has to deal with setbacks and exposures and distance between structures. So it's that high of a preference for us in our response. So when we start reducing that, that affects our ability to properly and safely put the fire out. It also affects us from other emergency standpoints as far as access to backyards, side yards, and so forth. So it is a concern of ours and we would like to leave it at the 7-foot setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will move on to item number 7, which is gonna be the discussion on non-conforming structures and uses on page 36.
So this deals with language in the zoning ordinance. We have someone to here to speak to the certain situation. We just wanted a P&amp;Z interpretation before staff makes an interpretation just so we are consistent with how you all want the ordinance to be enforced. So currently, I'm trying to find the language. It's on page 36 of the packet. 1516-1E is "Any existing non-conforming structure shall not be enlarged, moved, or structurally altered except to change to an authorized permitted or conditional use or as otherwise required by law. This is not to include normal repairs and maintenance that does not enlarge, move, or structurally alter a non-conforming structure." Basically, the question is, this seems pretty clear. It shall not be enlarged, moved, or structurally altered, seems to be at all. Would... Is that the correct interpretation? Or what if an owner of a non-conforming building wanted to expand it, but not in a way that would expand the non-conformity? Is that something you would allow? Or is that strictly, and you cannot expand the non-conforming structure at all?
Explain to me how it wouldn't expand the non-conformity.
If you look at the example, this is what Mr. Callahan would like to do. So this is the old Joker's Casino over on East Cedar Street. So 1309, the first building that on the drawing shows the actual casino. The garage is a detached garage. And what he would like to do is to, at the area in the green, he would expand his usable space and also combine the two structures. So instead of having a detached accessory structure, it'd be one big combined building. So the green, which would be the new building scope of the work, would meet the 7-foot setback on the side and would meet the 5-foot setback on the rear, but we would not touch or affect the two main structures, which both are slightly out of compliance as they currently stand, but they're grandfathered. So... That's kind of where we stand. And as Patrick mentioned, you know, the staff, we had several people look at it and just felt like that we wanted to ask the board, could we clarify the non-conforming language and potentially allow this applicant, and future applicants, if this scenario came up to allow this, the green shaded section, which was a new construction, which would meet in conformance. There was about maybe six, seven years ago at the Brandon Elementary School, there's a detached garage at Elm and 2nd. And at that time, the staff did allow the school district to add on to that detached garage. But the new part, which was about a third of the building, had to bring, brought into compliance. So we have a little bit of a track record, but on this one, we wanted to get a clarification. And then from henceforth, we probably would go with this same scenario if the board agreed to it, so...
Go ahead, Brian.
So, Mr. Clark, in this particular instance, are they... Are they requesting to add on to the business structure or to the garage structure?
It won't much of Mr. Callahan, yeah.
There's a grayish, kind of purplish button to push.
There we go.
Yep, thank you for hearing me today.
Let me get your, just their name and address for the record, please.
Mine?
Yeah.
Garrett Callahan, Ambush Apparel.
Perfect.
Yeah, we're at 1517 West Holly. So, yeah, right now, we have two options, to add on to the garage and make that, you know, come all the way across the backside of it and to attach it to the front structure, or to take the front structure, the storage front, and take that back and attach it to the garage. We're just making, trying to make that a big L-shaped building, is what we're trying to do.
So my understanding is the garage is out of conformance?
By, yeah, because it shows currently that's 4 feet 3 inches, and then it needs to be 5 feet. So it was built at that point, you know, years ago that was assumed to be co-compliant at that time, but not under today's regulations. So...
So in my mind, if we're expanding the business portion of the existing facility and that does not infringe upon the setbacks, I don't have any issue with that. However, if we were expanding the non-conforming portion, then yes, I would not... Is my, my understanding and interpretation that that would not be allowed.
Okay. So then I think we could make the assumption that he's expanding the business portion of it.
Right.
I mean, I'd like to expand the garage portion of it.
Shh.
It's all part of it, you know what I mean? But if I moved it to 5 feet?
If you moved 5 feet and you're in compliance, then this is a non-issue. But I don't think we can, just because the existing garage is out of compliance, I don't think it's the intent that, well, we just continue the out-of-compliance expansion.
Right. So the addition looks like it's going to create an L-shaped building and the, I mean, the addition that is gonna be put on it will be in compliance. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think we've had a, we've had a few cases here in the last year that have been examples of this. I think one example was someone wanted to expand a garage that was within the setback.
Yep.
And we did not allow that. And that was in a residential. That was kind of up by the water tower, west of the school. And I think there was another application for a non-conforming accessory structure.
Anybody else? So this is just a discussion item. Does anybody have any other concerns or issues? Otherwise, we could instruct the staff to... Go ahead.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that good? Awesome. All right, now we'll move on to what's pages 4 and 5. Brian would like to have some discussion on the plat of Brandon Park Edition, Track C, and Block 5. I do believe that this is a drainage area. Am I right there? Patrick? Or is this, this is land that we own, this would be sort of behind the pizza ranch? Is that correct?
I believe so. I'm probably not as familiar with this one as I should be since I generally defer to engineering on plats.
Yes. And...
The reason I brought it up is it's an odd-shaped lot, so I did a little looking on the parcel finder and...
Yep.
It's not a street.
It's not.
There's actually a, looking on Google Earth, there's a structure sitting on it. I just had a question of what's the purpose of this lot? It's a very unique lot, the ownership of the lot.
You know, I don't, I think Brian and Tammy would be able to answer this better, except for the only thing I can think of is that we might have utilities running under it. So we, as a city, have bought it.
Okay.
So since we did that, then we're just replating it? So it's ours?
So we're just, we're adding that little pie-shaped piece?
Um, Track C. So Track C runs all the way?
Oh, I was thinking it was that little pie-shaped piece off to the upper right-hand corner. Nope? Okay.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I just wanted to understand. Yep, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve plat of Brandon Park Edition, Track C, and Block 5. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, item number 3, the plat of Country Club Heights Edition, Track 1 of Lot 9 and Track 2 of Lot 10. So...
So this one appears to be just north of the golf cart storage building, correct?
Yes. So this is land, I believe, that we just recently acquired to build the road that goes down to the storage shed.
Correct. Is there a reason this is not part of the golf course lot?
Uh, because we just bought it.
But would it, would it not be annexed and a portion of that lot? For our definitions, every lot has to have either street frontage or a, um, access easement to it.
Um, this will actually be a street, if I remember correctly.
That is my recollection of the...
Yes.
City Council briefing we had.
So this, this will eventually become a part of the golf course plot? I just, what I don't want to see is a landlocked parcel.
Sure.
Even, even though it's city-owned, it, you know, doesn't set a very good example if we, if we allow exceptions for the city that we do not allow for the public. So...
Yep.
But that, if that's the intent, is that it'll be purchased from the landlords and then become a part of the, of the golf course?
Yes.
After the purchase, correct?
I, I believe so, but I'm not 100%. But I believe so.
I guess if that's the case, then yeah, I'm okay with this.
Okay. Move to approve?
That's a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the plat of Country Club Heights Edition, Track 1 of Lot 9 and Track 2 of Lot 10. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we'll move to item number 8, the public hearing, zoning ordinance, Chapter 15-5-12, R2 Medium Density Residential Lot and Yard Regulations.
So Mr. Jackson is on the phone, so hopefully we can get him close enough to the microphone on speakerphone that you'll be able to have a dialogue back and forth.
Okay.
Kristi Agabran, Van Bussen Companies.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? I've got Brian on the phone here. He is fortunately in Las Vegas and we're here. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Hi there, everybody. Am I speaking in favor, is that where we're at now as far as comments go?
You are good to go. Talk away.
You're good to go, talk away.
Okay. Um, I guess as we discussed in past meetings with this is that what we're looking to do is just support the zoning change in the R2 to allow for the 5-foot side yard setbacks unless it's adjoining to an R1, where that would be back to 7 feet. The reason to do so is that the consumers are looking for... Looking for, um, looking for workforce housing opportunities that allow for a little smaller footprint of a home. Uh, we have four plans that would fit with this along with other developers and builders, which I think you've seen as some other preliminary plans that come along with this. So what we've done is gone back through and met with Tammy and Patrick and Paul, what is probably like in November, talked this over as far as what the best option would be, and then took this next step, I guess, to revisit it from the last time we talked about it, probably last summer. Um, and I know the Fire Chief has some concerns regarding that and, and I would assume that they are, I mean, they are of valid concerns and he's gonna look at this a little bit differently than I would and he said so as much as in his email with that. But as, as we discussed in the, in past meetings, there are other communities that have volunteer fire departments that have similar, if not smaller setbacks on some of their R1 and R2 zoning with it. And, and I think as the consumer homeowner goes in and knows that they're gonna have an understanding that they're going to, the houses are gonna be closer together. But as far as, you know, fire jumping from one, one building to another, you know, I, I look at it this way, is, you know, the fire department does a good job of responding, from my understanding, whether it's the Brandon or Volunteer Fire Department, Harrisburg, or the Full Time Fire Department in Sioux Falls, is that, you know, they're gonna get there, assess the situation, and decide whether they're going to attack the fire at the structure or protect the building, adjacent buildings, depending upon where they're at with that. But I think a lot of the fires, and I'm not a fire expert by any means, but watching news clips and anything along like that is, you know, they've always seen the firefighters, you know, they're cutting holes in the roof or holes in the walls or entering into structure to fight the fires with that. So I would, I would think that in a rare instance where fire would be jumping from one structure to another, you're probably looking at an explosion of some sort, which, you know, 7 feet or 5 feet may or may not make a difference. But I totally appreciate his concerns with that and, and bringing them forth with that, with those comments. But I, I think this would be a great opportunity for a buffer, like we talked about in the past, between the interstates and the other homes that are going to be in the area. And then we also talked about some transitional areas with other developers that are looking to do this, that would, you know, put this along an arterial street for sound buffering, um, things along that line, and then structure it into more of your single-family home that would go with it. So I guess that's kind of repeating things that you've all heard from me in the past and willing to take any questions if you have any as far as my comment.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Use your microphone, please. Thank you.
This would apply to all lots or just certain kinds of lots?
Um, well...
Single-family detached homes, so your traditional standalone house.
Just any, like my house or any house?
Well, in R2.
Yes, in R2.
In R2.
You're in R1.
Yes.
I'm in R1. Oh, okay.
And that, with, in the draft, that would also apply to single-family attached. This, the seat, seat number 5, but that would, if it was attached, there would necessarily not be a, probably a side yard on one or more of the sides. So that would be the, the blank space, if it was next, the open space next to an R1 would still be 7, but...
So this, this would apply to like... 2, 3,000 square foot home? Yeah?
It would apply to whatever...
Or a twin home or...
Anything not multifamily.
I mean, we're not just talking about...
An R2.
Like those villa homes with no basements. We're not talking about just them. We're talking about any house. I just want to make sure that I know.
Correct, this does not specify it's a villa home. It's a single-family detached home.
Yes.
Any house in R2.
Any, any house in R2.
In R2.
So just, just a comment, there's been some comments about fire. And Paul, please jump in on this. You know, the city of Brandon enforces the International Building Code as well as the International Residential Code. And those codes do require specific fire requirements based on the distance between structures, the distance between a structure and a lot line. And 5 foot is pretty much the standard where you're allowed non-rated walls, openings and rated and/or non-rated walls. And so that's kind of the, the industry standard for the minimum, once you get less than that. So if we were to put, say, 3 foot as a side yard, then you'd have to do things like protected openings, one hour rated exterior walls, those kinds of things. So just from an industry standard, that 5 foot is pretty much a standard requirement for building construction requirements.
Would you agree with that, Paul?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the Fire Chief a question. Since this is R2 that we're talking about, do you see any difference between R1 and R2 as, as far as you're concerned?
No, structure is a structure that we have to protect. Period.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Yep.
So if I remember correctly, when we set a 7-foot side yard setback and the... We came up with setbacks so that we could get rid of our lot coverage rule, if I remember correctly. That has been years ago. So we've been operating with these setbacks for a long time based upon a compromise that was made 20 years ago with not doing lot coverage rules because developers wanted to have smaller lots with bigger houses. So we said, okay, but then we're gonna hold to these setbacks. So the 7-foot number we came up with wasn't because of it, it was the International Building Code. It was the number that people sitting at this table came up with. I wasn't one of them, but that's where that number came from. So, yeah, I mean, we could have 10-foot setbacks if we wanted to. Yep? So, I mean, that's up for you guys to decide what you'd like to do.
I'm comfortable with the industry standard at 5 foot.
So the other option that we could do is, I mean, we could say that we leave it at 7 in R2 and then if you want to move them, it could be a planned development. I know we don't necessarily like planned developments, but that would be another option if they wanted to take a block out of a neighborhood and do a planned development. But, go ahead, come on up, sir. Just give us your name and address.
Nick Van Over shield, 2604 West Bittera Streets, Sioux Falls. So we're obviously here for the Chestnut Ridge project coming up next. And we got these Z-Lot Villa lots, R2, within that development. But with my builder hat on, not my developer hat on, like Brian said, with the consumers, we build a lot in Brandon, especially on the east side. And we have a lot of requests for, hey, we're looking to downsize, go into a single-family home, but they're not necessarily at that point yet where they want to share a wall in a twin home situation. But yet, maybe they aren't able to afford a 1,500 square foot slab-on-grade-type home on an 80-foot lot in R1. I know this, what you guys are about to vote on covers all of R2, but if you look at the villa situation within R2 and those lots get down to 50-foot lots, but the way they're so strategically laid out, if you look kind of at an aerial view of an, of a villa situation, say that building's 50 feet long, only about a third of the center of it is within what would be 10 feet of the other structure if you went down to 5 feet. The garages are offset to where that front 25 feet has about probably 40 feet between structures. And the rear yards are offset to where they are past the structure. And I know it's hard without an example, but, um, again, the way they're laid in there diagonally in that Z-shaped situation, just that center third is the only thing that's adjacent. So you can make the argument that two houses side by side that are 14 feet apart, but they're parallel to one another and 55, 50, 55 feet deep, them entire structures are, are perfectly parallel with one another for the whole length. Where in a Z-Lot situation, villa situation, only the third and the center of the structure is within 10 feet of one another. So again, I know this is covering all of R2, reduction setback to 5 feet, but I just wanted to comment on the villa situation. When he talked about a transitional use from I-90 out where they're working south into their development, especially for a villa situation, it makes a ton of sense. Thank you.
Yep. So does anybody else have any questions or comments or thoughts on how we're...
So I'm trying to re, trying to recall. Did we not take action on this previously? It went to City Council and then got sent back, is that...
This was brought up as a discussion item sometime August, probably. And this board decided that it didn't want to write up any language to schedule a public hearing or move forward on. So it was more, it was just a discussion item. It never progressed past just talking.
But this, however, is a public hearing, correct?
Correct. So you all will be making a recommendation to the City Council that they adopt this or do not adopt this. So either way, it will be going to the City Council on Monday for our first reading public hearing.
Okay.
I would move to make a recommendation that we move forward with this.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the language for R2 Medium Density Residential Lot and Yard Regulations. Uh, any further discussion?
I just, I... If I were a home buyer, I would want, like, more safety in my home rather than less. But I won't, you know, I won't fight it or, or, you know. If the, if the rest of the commission is, prove, you know, is okay with it, I'll go with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I would just say that, that that would be, if there aren't buyers for it, then it probably won't occur very often. And, and I just think that if there's one more opportunity to have a house size that isn't quite so big, we... Clearly, I think I'm hearing that there's, those are being requested. So I think that's why I'm in support of this.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, no other discussion. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tone to blit, let's see, red 28.
Red 28.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, public hearings zoning ordinance, chapter 15-9-3, general business conditional uses.
All right.
So, when we were working through the neighborhood business, we talked about if we allow a owner-occupied dwelling in industrial, I think light industrial, and then we do a neighborhood business, why should general business somehow not be treated somewhat the same? So this is what we came up with, a dwelling that's owner-occupied on the first floor can be the lesser of either 1,300 square feet or 25% of the building footprint. So that's what we came up with currently, you can have a non-first-floor dwelling in general business as a, as a conditional use. So this would make this a conditional use as well.
So we're just making this line up with all the other districts, essentially?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And this is, since this is a public hearing, I'll ask if anybody has anything to say about this? Okay, anybody up here have anything to say about this? If not, then I will entertain a motion to recommend this to city council.
I would make the motion to recommend approval.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Awesome. All right, item number 10 is the preliminary plans for the Chestnut Ridge addition. You're up, sir.
Nick Van Overshield, Chestnut Ridge Development, 2604 West Bitterer Street, Sioux Falls. So we're back with the general business in Block 10, from when we met a couple of weeks Honestly, most excited to see what happens with neighborhood business out of this, as that starts to develop and get longer and further through. Yeah, no other changes, I guess, than what we talked about last time, other than willing to work in some business out on that northwest corner in that fifth phase, along Chestnut and Redwood.
Okay, so if I remember correctly, two weeks ago, this is what we asked him to do, this was basically the only thing we had a problem with. Would we be in agreement to that? Okay.
On Block 10, are you going to separate it, I know there's a street there, but-
Yeah.
Is there going to be fencing along that border?
You know, I don't think we've, we're, we're not at that point in it to be able to answer that yes or no at this time, I guess.
I know from your, your plan for developing certain areas at certain times, it's a long ways off.
Yeah, it is.
Those are single-family homes there in Block 9.
Yeah.
And they're going to be expensive, and I would think they would want some kind of separation there.
I think that-
Unless it's neighborhood business, in which case they'll want access to them.
Correct, I think that's the ultimate goal, will be able to eventually be able to go down that path, you know, with a walkable neighborhood, like Brian was talking last time with the-
That's what we're hoping for.
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
I'm, I'm really in favor of, of this development. I think the, the medium and high density next to a school is, an elementary school, is the best thing that we can be doing. You know, it's the young families, just starting out, can't afford, you know, the nice higher-end homes, they're the ones with two, three kids, right next to a elementary school, I see Mr. Larson's here representing the school tonight, I assume you're representing the school tonight?
No.
I, I think that's an ideal situation. My only concern, you know, and I know we talked last time about, about the neighborhood business at, at the intersection, the reality of those lots, so we currently don't have a formal neighborhood business in the ordinance yet, we're, we're working on that here, hopefully within the next couple, couple months, it'll get passed to this, to the city, but-
Yeah.
The intent of a neighborhood business is, it has the, the same setbacks as, as residential. So the frontage, these lots, as drawn out here, have double frontage, and so in that situation, you're going to have 25-foot setbacks on both sides.
Yeah.
And with only 120 feet deep, you take 50 feet out of that 120, you've only got 70 feet of buildable area to put both parking and building. And so I'm just concerned about the logistics of, of the, the reality of those lots being feasible from a business development standpoint.
And I guess-
I was, I was kind of thinking that, that line, kind of separating the, the two halves of the, of Block 9, the outside of that would be the business, and then eliminating that, that outside loop-
Sure.
-of roads, but-
I, I think it's, again, trying to see how neighborhood business evolves, and again, having that area be, be walkable. You know, I know it'd be narrow, but, I mean, we were looking at some situations where, like a Minneapolis, Omaha, where you could have some type of 70-foot structure linear in there, parking in between another 70-foot structure, and then obviously you get large as you start to go around that outside loop of Lincoln Lane. It's where, again, I know we're approving general business, but neighborhood business isn't necessarily going to be strip malls with parking in front of it, I, I look for it to be more walkable than that. So as far as the, the, the narrowness of it, there, there may be something that's workable there, yeah.
I admire already the creativity and thinking. Thank you. Because that was also the intention of the neighborhood business.
Yeah.
Was to make it not look like traditional strip malls.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand this is preliminary, you know?
Yeah.
Until this gets developed and finalized, things are, things are still fluid, so-
Yeah, it's, it's tough.
We're understanding of that.
Yeah, we're getting really hung up on the stuff that's out in 2031.
And, and we, we do appreciate you working with us on this, and-
Yeah.
I think in the past, we've taken a little bit more of a passive attitude towards development, and, and in the past year or so, there's just been a lot of, a lot more contention, both in this group as well as city council, and we're just trying to avoid that.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, and maybe plan ahead for, you know, some of the business and some of the, the high-density residential, so thank you for working with us on this.
Yeah.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak on this development? I mean, you're here, you might as well get up, right? I mean-
You got anything to grill him on the school's timeline?
What would you like to be grilled on? Anything? Nothing?
I'm, I'm open to answering any questions you might have. Jared Larson, 2000 River Bluff Drive is my residential address, we got a whole bunch of school addresses, I just don't know any of them, so that's why I elected to use the residential. I guess what I would note is our timeline, we are in some high-level preliminary planning processes right now with our, with the architectural firm that we use, just layout-type stuff, nothing, nothing obviously definitive, just some real high-level items. Our timeline, we are looking at, beginning in the spring of 2024, with a build during the 24, 25 school year, and this facility be, being open in the fall of 2025. So we have obviously a high level of interest in the infrastructure, specifically the sewerability of that, that piece of property. So our timeline is clearly outlined for the public within the state of the schools address, which is also available online. With that, that's our timeline that we were really excited about. I would note that our, in our preliminary discussions and plans, we intend to fund that project through issuing capital outlay certificates, which ultimately means there will be no additional tax burden placed on the Brandon Valley residents in terms of a bond issue, simply an issuance of debt, because our debt situation is so incredibly good right now, we're able to do that to hold down the respective tax rates. So again, with that, would certainly entertain any questions that you might have.
Do you have any issues with this development?
No, sir. No, absolutely not.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Larson? Nope.
I think last time, we had some discussions about access, and, and I was just kind of curious about the extension of, I can't think of it, Chestnut Boulevard across the north edge of your property, and you guys, just to confirm, you guys are not in favor of a continuous access across there?
Chestnut Trail?
Chestnut Trail will come across and into, basically butt up to our property, I believe.
Rather than coming straight through and connecting those two paths?
Oh, what you're saying is East Chestnut Trail doesn't go all the way through your north side, you're probably, we talked about it the one time, but then we thought for the safety of the kids-
Yep.
-it's better to have green space between the school and the townhomes, rather than have that street go all the way through to the east.
In addition to that, I believe, in conversation with our architect, in terms of like bus loop and those various operational items that are necessary, we are good with, with that respective layout.
So access at those two northwest and northeast corners is adequate for what you guys are thinking?
Yeah, I believe that would, that would certainly service us.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions about this development? Anyone? If not, Chuck?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of this to city council.
Is that correct? We recommend a city council, or we just rec, we just approve the preliminary plans? Oh, it's procedural, look out.
I, I think it's a recommendation, but I, the city council ultimately has to approve them, I think you both approved them, you might do it through a recommendation.
So if nothing else, we're just approving the preliminary plans?
Correct, and change it to the preliminary plan if they're significant, you don't have to come back and all that.
Yep. Awesome.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plans for Chestnut Ridge. Any other discussion?
I have one other request for-
Yes, sir.
You, councilperson Jorgensen in Ish, please tell the city council these things that we're recommending tonight were all unanimous.
Noted. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in, uh-oh.
I have a question. Um, a few months ago, we talked about maybe starting to update the comp plan, and we said, well, maybe after the first of the year, and now it's February, so I wondered if there's a, if we have any plans to start working on that.
We do, I have the, so as part of the comp plan, we have community surveys that go out, I have them about 95% done, there's a resident survey, a business owner survey, and a developer survey, so the developers in the room, you'll probably get a survey about the city, and what you'd like to see, and what you do, and that kind of thing. So those will be, those are about 95% done, they are, they are very close. So normally, we run through the comprehensive plan with CCOG historically, CCOG is unavailable until April, so I imagine we will press forward on our own. I have, I've been working through the demographics chapter, since that's relatively simple, I'm waiting for Tammy's schedule to, it'll never slow down, but get to a point where she can assist with the, the more technical aspects of it, like the environmental constraints, and the more engineering aspects of it. But yes, that is coming up very soon, and I hope to have the surveys finalized, and my hope next week is I will send out a very preliminary survey to all of you for your comments on it, what you'd like to see in there, so that, expect to see those next week. So we, yes, we are starting on the comp plan, so anyone interested in providing comments on that, we will do our best to provide plenty of public avenues of communication. And the comp plan is the development plan, so the comp plan is the public policy aspect of zoning. Zoning, if, if you're doing it right, zoning and grants and engineering design standards and all that fun technical stuff should get you from your, where we are now, to where we hope to be in the comp plan. So zoning and all that stuff is the tools to make the policy work, so the comp plan is writing the policy for the next five, 10, 15 years of development.
Awesome.
So with your legal advice, my understanding is we do need to follow that in our decision-making by state law, correct? That we can't arbitrarily put a-
The comp plan is-
-industrial move-
The comp plan is a guideline, it's not law, it is your rational basis for doing things. So if you're going to deviate from the comp plan, you need a, a good reason to do so. Things change, we, we can't predict 10 years from now where the hotspot of development's going to be, so there are situations where your comp plan may not be up to date, but hopefully, moving forward, we will spend some time on making sure it does stay up to date as well.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. I asked for discussion, and then Alyssa went, whew. Okay, hearing none, other, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 11 is building permits for January. Oh, how did Paul do this month? Bleak. Hmm. I mean, it's been cold, so I'll give you a pass, you haven't built anything this year yet, but-
Well, just a quick update, we did get our first interface communications with Fairway Stores.
Ooh.
So we responded back to them, and the ball has begun to move.
Any indication when a quick trip will actually start moving dirt?
April.
April?
23rd, 8:00 a.m.
That's beautiful.
Take a bullet rate.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:16. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.